All right, it's after 5:30 we'll go ahead and get started tonight's meeting. We'll have a roll call.
Mindy Payne?
Here.
Jonathan Townsend?
Jaylee Klimpa?
Here.
Jason Cohen?
Here.
Robert Goransson?
Here. First, we got consideration of consent agenda number four. Is there any items you wish to pull from consent agenda? Any items staff wish to pull? All right, nothing to be pulled from consent. Got a motion?
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda per staff recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, second, have a roll call vote.
Y'all are too fast. Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. Item number five, items pulled from consent agenda we have done, so we've got item number six, public hearings. Item 6A 24-790.
Yes, this is a public hearing consideration and possible action regarding BAZ 1502 2024, rezoning and PUD 1503 2024, Twin Oaks, 13.9 acres, A1 agricultural, to RS4, single-family residential located north of the east of East Washington Street, 91st Street South, and approximately one-quarter mile east of 23rd Street, 193rd East, or 193rd Avenue County Line Road. The Three Oaks development proposes to create a single-family development. The development will include single-family detached dwellings, neighborhood community playfields, and parks, including clubhouse, clubhouses, pools, and similar neighborhood amenities, minor utility facilities. A 50-foot green space buffer will be along the western property boundary abutting the current residential district, along with a six-foot fence with masonry columns. A maximum of 45 lots served by public streets built to the standards of the city of Broken Arrow, with two entry points on Washington Street, East, 91st Street South. PUD 1503 2024 is proposed to be developed in accordance with RS4 zoning requirements, except as modified by the PUD zoning ordinance, section 4.1.1.1B, would permit 77 dwelling units with the proposed RS4 underlying zoning, and 86 dwelling units would be permitted if RSC under the pending new zoning ordinance. PUD 1503 2024 will restrict the development to 45 dwelling units. PUD 1503 2024 will have a lot area of 5,000 square feet. The proposed development is designed at Level 3, Transition, and the Comprehensive Plan. This level does support the development of residential subdivisions. We did hold a neighborhood meeting with the developer on Monday. A few questions about the conditions of Washington Street came up in the discussion. Neighbors had just questions about the development, how many homes, what type of builder would be out that way as well. Based upon the Comprehensive Plan, the location of the property, and the surrounding land uses, staff recommends that BAZ 1502 2024 be approved subject to the property being platted, and PUD 1503 2024 be approved as submitted. I'm here if you have any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
All right, thanks. Any questions, staff? Is the applicant present? Do you have anything you wish to add?
Well, Ricky's on his way up. We have quite a few people here, and we only have two request-to-speak forms. So just a heads up, if you do want to speak on any particular item, you will need to fill out the pink form. So if you don't fill that out, you won't be permitted to speak. So please let us know if you need one.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. And I'm Ricky Jones, 6215 West Orlando Street in Broken Arrow. We're in agreement with staff recommendation. I want to point out a couple of things. I think they did a very good job going over the details of the development. I don't need to go over that. You've got a longer meeting. Couple of things, though, that are important. I've had over 12 telephone calls, two onsite meetings, and then we had a big neighborhood meeting, as they mentioned, at NSU Monday evening. I don't want to speak for the interested parties, but it's my opinion that nobody was opposed to it. Their concern was the conditions of the road that came up out front, 91st Street. And if you remember, when we did the comp plan change back in November, when we changed it from Level 6 to Level 3, that issue came up as well. There may be some information that staff has, but the other thing with my meetings, you should have in your packet letters of support. So I went out and met individually with specifically not only the neighborhood, but those that back up to the subject tract. And I have letters of support from, I think it's two or three of them, that abut the property. But again, I have, we think it's going to be a great development. The preliminary plat will come up in two weeks, so we're, now that we've actually done the plat, we're down to like 41 lots, very low density. It's about 3.3 dwelling units to the acre. We're excited about it. We wanted to, the reason it's taken so long is we wanted to file it under the new RSC, the new zoning code, but we don't know when the code's going to be adopted. I think you handled a case like this maybe last month where somebody filed a zoning case in a PUD that said, "Give me RSC." That's basically what we're doing. So we would ask that you approve the project as presented and recommended by staff, and we'll go on to the city council. You'll see the plat in two weeks. If there's any questions, I'll try and respond.
Well, let me ask you a quick question, Mr. Jones. The perimeter fencing, I guess, the masonry, the fencing with the masonry, is that just on the west side only? Or is it going to go all the way around?
Well, what I've negotiated with the neighbors is we're going to have a six-foot solid wood fence with brick masonry columns on their property lines. We have not designed, I believe the code requires along 91st there be a wood fence, but we haven't designed it, so I don't know yet if that's going to have masonry columns. So the west side will for sure on their property.
And that's kind of what I was looking at on the layouts you got the preliminary. So in between where the 50-foot buffer is that you have, so what will the neighbors put in the home? Or do they get to put in just privacy fence, or is it limited to split rail with a?
We've not decided at this point. So that 50-foot is going to be passive recreation. There'll be a walking trail back there. So it will be up to those property owners whether they want to build a privacy fence, because they may not want to see the people walking behind them, or a ranch rail, or something like that. So that will be left up to the property owner, but the developer will build the six-foot fence solid with the masonry columns on the west side.
Okay, so at least it's going to be you to inform where it's adjacent to the next neighborhood.
Yes, that is correct. And I negotiated that, didn't negotiate it. We offered that with the developers, and we think that's fair.
Okay. Any questions, applicant?
No, no. I think it looks good.
Thanks.
I'll address the comment about the road. There are plans to reclaim 91st Street from county line to, I believe it's 200 East Avenue, and that'll be done between now and July 1st of next year.
So when you say reclaim, because I want to go back and report to the neighborhood what you're proposing. So from, you're going to reclaim 91st from county line?
To 200th East Avenue, I believe it is, in that area.
And?
So reclaim is a certain type of machinery that comes and chews up all the asphalt, and they use it as base, and they put eight inches of asphalt on top of that, so.
Do you, because I've, only because I've been asked by the neighbors, you don't anticipate at this time needing to acquire any additional right-of-way?
Not for the roadwork, no.
Okay, perfect. They'll be excited to hear that.
Yep.
Thank you very much for that.
Did you have anybody, you said you didn't have anybody else to speak?
We did not unless, this was on the other PUD. So unless someone has a form they haven't brought up, I do not have anybody for this item.
So any questions, staff?
No.
We'll close the public hearing. I guess we're ready for a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6A per staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
I have most second, I have a roll call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. Now that'll go before the city council on July 16th at 6:30 right here in this room. Next item on the agenda is item number 6B, 24-798.
Yes. This is PUD, excuse me, 1520-2024. This is a proposed major amendment to PUD 66 for Forest Ridge. PUD 66 was approved by city council on August 1st, 1988. Since its adoption, PUD 66 has been amended seven times. This property is generally located one-half mile south of Kenosha Street and west of Midway Road. This property is currently not platted and is undeveloped. PUD 1520-2024 is a proposed major amendment to bring the original, what was a school site tract into PUD 66. The reason for the major amendment is to expand the boundaries of PUD 66. This facility is proposed to include both indoor and outdoor tennis and racquetball courts, as shown in the conceptual site plan and development plan. PUD 1520 does clarify the definition of the use type as community playfields and parks. Currently, it says that they are public facilities. The applicant would like to change that definition to say community playfields and parks are allowed to be privately owned and operated. That would permit the use that they're looking to get in the underlying residential zoning that the property is in. The applicant is requesting with this PUD that plating be waived for this development. The PUD does state that no building permit shall be issued prior to the property being included within a subdivision plat. Staff has worked with the applicant to put adequate safeguards into the PUD that staff can support while waiving the plating requirements. PUD 1520-2024 reads, "All public right-of-way and roads for ingress and egress have previously been dedicated. All right-of-way and all easements required for the maintenance of any required stormwater detention facility and any easements required to provide services and access will be dedicated via separate instrument prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy in compliance with the city of Broken Arrow regulations." Current code requires that all non-residential uses that abut a residential use should provide a 10-foot landscape buffer with a minimum of one medium to large evergreen tree for each 20 linear feet. In lieu of the fencing requirement, this PUD is proposing to increase the landscape buffer to a 10-foot buffer with a minimum of one medium to large evergreen tree for every 15 linear feet. I won't go through the conditions of a PUD. Those are in your staff report if you'd like to read them. But staff does believe that PUD 1520-2024 meets the purposes of the criteria's 1, 4, and 5 listed in your staff report. Staff believes that this is an innovative land use, which does create a unified design and creates a more productive use of the land. According to the FEMA maps, none of the property is located in the 100-year floodplain. Water and sanitary sewer are available from the city of Broken Arrow. So based on the location of the property and surrounding land uses, staff is recommending that PUD 1520-2024 be approved and that plating be waived. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here.
Thanks, Amanda. Well, let me ask you a question. On that landscape, the landscape buffer is 10 feet, but in lieu of the fencing, they want to add 10 feet to that to make a total 20 feet landscape buffer?
It's a 10-foot, and the applicant can clarify if I may speak, but the landscape buffer would be 10-foot in total, but instead of one per 20 feet, one tree per 20 feet, it'll be one tree per 15 feet. So they're adding additional trees in lieu of the fencing requirement.
So in the area that we're going to have the 10-foot landscape buffer, and then another area we're going to, instead of having the fencing, we're going to have a 10-foot buffer there, too?
Just one 10-foot, one 10-foot landscape buffer.
Okay, so no fencing, period. Just going from 1 to 20 to 115. All right. Any questions, staff? Is the applicant present? Do you have anything you wish to add?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chair and Planning Commission staff. Good to see everyone. Just have a few notes. We have a few slides just to show a little bit more of the context of the requests that's before you for the PUD amendment. Jill Ferentz with TSW. We also have Preston with Westwood Engineering and the owner developer here as well. So we have a team here to answer some questions if you have any additional questions as well. So to provide a little bit more context, this first slide just shows, in case you're not familiar with the Ridge Club site currently, and gives orientation to where this future phase would go. So the picture on the left is, you know, facing south, as you can see, but the field behind it is where the actual improvements would go, the expansion. And to the left, you might not have noticed before, but there is a maintenance building off to the left, so that you'll see that in our site plan. There are proposed improvements as part of Phase 2 where that current maintenance building is. And to the right, that's just facing north, just giving a good visual of what's currently on site there. Next slide, please. And then this conceptual development plan was included in your PUD packet and shows Phase 1 and Phase 2 improvements, all within that white area. The south side is designated as future development area. But what I'd like to point out, too, here is, we had mentioned the landscape buffer earlier. It's shown on the west side, and it's highlighted to be 450 feet. So really, to cover that first Phase 1 and Phase 2 area to ensure that the development that's coming up next will be screened at that time, and then the future development area would be screened as necessary or as required at that time that it is developed. And it is one tree per 15 linear feet. That's correct. And I have one more slide later on, just to show you the type of planting material we're planning to use. Next slide, please. This is the very similar site plan, just shows it in color. And we have boards here, and these are really just in case anyone wants to look up close later or to speak with anyone that might be here to ask questions or learn more about the project. These will also be on the screen, too. So what you see on the screen now is more of the master plan site for Phase 1 and Phase 2, even future improvements on the current Ridge Club site. So you can see there's a number of tennis courts. There's also, on the ones that are more horizontal, right here, this structure here, and as you look at the screen, there are two areas that show pickleball and tennis courts. Those are where the sports dome structures are proposed. And then, as you can see, in Phase 2, parking improvements are planned to the east and to the north where that maintenance building I pointed out earlier is located. So we're going to, of course, ensure that stormwater detention requirements are met during the development process as well. And we're also showing gated entry off of Midway Road. Next slide, please. This is a 3D visualization, and so we do have a large print of that as well. But these sports dome structures are, as you can see in the back, a part of the PUD request is to increase the height to 45 feet. And that's really a standard height based upon the curvature of the dome and making sure there's a clear span for safety purposes when you're playing indoors, especially for tennis and pickleball. And actually, on the next slide, we have an example of what that looks like in real life, too, just to give a better visual. Thank you. This is a real-life example in Shangri-La Resort at Grand Lake. You can see on the left side, that is a sports dome structure as well. It is intended at this Ridge Club site to be up all year, so there's year-round playing, whether it be through storms, or rain, or cold weather. You'll still be able to play inside. Next slide. And to speak a little bit more on the landscape buffer, these are the trees that we're planning to use, the Green Giant Arborvitae. I did look up how to say that. I think I said it right. But we are planning to put these in one per, or we will be required through this PUD to put in one per 15 feet. They do grow to be very thick and full trees, and they grow up to mature size of 40 to 60 feet. So they'll definitely be a great screening, a great buffer. They're also fast-growing, and they do well in Oklahoma. So we wanted to make sure to have a good natural buffer on the, from the properties to the west side of the site as well. So with that, that just provides a little bit more detail, but be happy to answer any questions that you have. We're definitely in agreement with staff recommendation and feel like this PUD is a continuation of a really unique and innovative concept with Forest Ridge and continuing to provide more services as it becomes more and more popular in the area to serve the residential area around it.
All right, thanks. Any questions, applicant?
I do have one. One concern I have is regarding the lighting aspect, and I know a lighting survey would be done in the development of it. But does the lighting survey actually identify concerns with the bulb fixture itself? You know, you might not have the lighting overshadow or lighten up somebody's backyard, but you could still have that bulb itself shining in somebody's window. So is that something that is considered? Have you guys figured out any concerns regarding that aspect of the lighting?
If I remember correctly, I believe code does require, basically, so that the light doesn't come out onto other properties in that way, so that there's some kind of a screening element. But also with the trees being 40 to 60 feet in height, ultimately, that will be an extra layer of protection in addition to the additional requirements for the city of Broken Arrow.
Okay.
Yes, our code does require the fixtures to be shielded so that you don't have that direct light. And then we also, for something like this, we'd require photometric to show the light levels at the property lines that don't exceed code.
Okay, thank you.
What would be the hours of operation, where like, would the lights go off at like 11:00 or?
If I could all ask Davis to come up and speak to that, thank you.
Can you come up to the mic, Davis?
Thank you, and I can actually speak to that first question a little bit as well. Oh, Dave's Robson, Robson Companies. And so, can I address the lighting concern first? That was a big concern of ours, too. We have a few different types of lighting at the facility right now. The newer lights that would be in this facility as well are LED, so they're not the towering Moscow lights that you've historically had on tennis courts. But, and they're also angled and almost at an L shape, so that addresses, it's not just like a blaring football light or something like that. And so it is a very serious consideration that we're taking. The landscape buffer will also help, especially in Phase 1. We don't anticipate Phase 2 starting for another two to five years, so they'll have time to grow up as well. And the Phase 1 concept is actually roughly 300 feet away from the closest property line as well. And then, please repeat the second question.
The hours of operation?
Yes, so hours of operation are currently 4:00 to 11:00 p.m., Monday, or on Thursday through Sunday, or Thursday through Saturday, and then 5:00 till 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Wednesday. And we do have shut off on the lights, so if somebody leaves them on, they'll turn off automatically.
That was my concern.
Any other question?
No.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we did have two people sign up to speak. They both had question, or one of them had questions on lighting. Susan Finnell? Please step forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Finnell, and I live at 105 North Forest Ridge Boulevard. And we actually live in that southwest section that's for the future planning over there. And my concern was, so we've lived there for 18 years. We back up to a green space, and we have a six-foot fence, privacy fence, and we have enjoyed the privacy there. We are all about fun and having all of the amenities that a big neighborhood like that should have. My concern is that I'm going to look out now my back deck, my back porch, onto a huge facility with lights, with a 45-foot dome. So we're talking about a facility that's four and a half feet, four and a half stories tall behind my house, okay? And the noise and all of that that goes along with that. So I'd like to, I'd like for someone to speak to, you know, noise control, light control, what that does to our view, our green view, our nice private green view.
We'll bring the applicant back up here in a second to address those.
Okay, wonderful.
Now, when you moved in, though, you knew it was going to be a school at that time, right?
Yeah, when you moved, I think at that stage, it was going to be maybe a sporting, like a field, like a, maybe a softball field or something at that stage. We knew that there was something, and then there were several levels of it changing hands and so forth.
But you weren't expecting the inflatable dome structure?
We weren't expecting the inflatable domes. We, from where we live, and we are on the far edge, we are the last house. We're on the far edge from there, and we can hear the pool, the music going on at the pool. And again, my kids went to that pool every single day. We loved it. We rode our bikes every single day down there. It is noisy, and there's not a lot of control of that there. And then, when you put a structure of that size, I'd also like to find out from that Grand Lake view that they gave us, what is that, what's that buffer, you know, between that dome and the nearest, the nearest residence? And how long does it take those trees to grow to 60 feet tall? If it takes 25 years, you know, I've got to wait 25 years before I have that sort of privacy? There's just some questions. I'm not, like, not in favor.
That I looked up a few years ago, and I think it grows like one to two feet a year, or three foot. I mean, they are fast-growing, if I remember right, so.
Okay, so if they grow two feet a year?
One foot a year, I guess it is.
If they grow one foot a year, and they're supposed to be 60 feet tall? Okay, so it depends on what they go in at, whatever the height that they go in at.
Bring him up here and again and see what they say.
Yeah, you know, and what that buffer is, you know, so just, we're just trying to plan.
Right.
We're not trying to spoil anybody's joy, but we do like our privacy, and we want to make sure that that's maintained well back there.
Right, and it's hard to compare the noise from what you have right now, because they don't have that landscaping out there now with what's going to go in. And of course, the dome facility's going to quiet down somewhat, but at the outside.
But, you know, we have, and people get excited playing pickleball and tennis and all that kind of stuff. So there's, you know, the voices and things like that. We have had issues in the past, well, ever since we've lived there for 18 years with them maintaining that property behind us, and the weeds and everything growing through our fence and damaging our fence. So there's just some issues. We just, we don't want to be killjoyous. We just want to find out what the plans are.
Right, okay, thanks. Was there anybody else who wish to speak?
Yes, Angela Sassoon. I apologize if I said that wrong.
I just had some questions as well, need some clarification. I live on the, I guess it's the north side. So my questions are about the new parking lot that's going to go in.
Could we get your name for the record?
Pardon me?
Could we get your name for the record?
Angela Sassoon.
Sassoon, okay, thanks.
You said it correctly. Right now, I live the second house in off of Freeport Street, and the lights do shine into our house, the current lights. And so I didn't, it's unclear whether or not that landscape buffer is going to also go around the new giant parking lot that's going to go in. And then, everyone that comes out of the parking lot, their lights in the evening, the lights shine into our house. You know, so that's something that we've had to deal with, so I see that they, they're adding a curb cut for that parking lot. And I just was curious if that curb cut had to be there, if they could just have the one on Midway and the current one that already exists. So my concerns are the lighting, which currently does shine into our house, the landscaping around on Freeport, and you do hear the tennis, just even the tennis balls, starting at 4:00 a.m., you hear them all the way until 11:00. So it's an exciting project, but kind of precarious to be building it so close to a residential area. I know that they have to consider that as well, so, thank you.
We'll get them to dress up. Was there anybody else?
That was it.
Did the applicant want to come back up and rebut some of those?
Can I address those?
Well, I think you're kind of representing the applicant anyway.
Yeah, yeah, maybe so. I feel like I should almost turn around a little bit, but we'll go here. So on the, on the lighting in general, and I can appreciate that. I know, I know where Ms. Sassoon lives, and that is next to the big Moscow lights. Can I ask her a question, actually? If those are, is that permitted? I'm not sure protocol on that, but if it was.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Are the lights that you see, are those the old lights, the really tall ones that are over there? Okay, and those will not be the lights that we put in on this at all. It's, they've come a long ways from those lights, and so these really are more directional. And so you don't have just... And so you don't have just the bulbs that are up there in the land.
And even in the parking lot, hiding, will it be also similar? Or the parking lot, I mean?
I would assume so. That parking lot is actually not going in at all until Phase Two. So we really haven't looked at that yet, but we will absolutely address that concern. We want to be good neighbors when we do this. We don't want to impose on anybody. We're just trying to expand the club, so.
Yeah, you're going to have to turn around and talk to them.
Okay, sorry about that.
That can be a meeting, you can engage with them later.
Okay. Yeah, so the parking lot itself is not going in until Phase Two, but we do need to address it, as this is all part. And we, it seems to me, on every new lighting project that we do, everything has gone to these LED lights. So the giant parking lot lights are really a thing of the past, even on the stuff that I see that's being built anywhere in town. We just haven't quite gotten that far down the design process to pick out the actual light that would go in on, on that particular project. And then on the first questions, I can completely, I can appreciate that. And we're, we're trying to be as forward-thinking as we can on the noise that's coming from those courts. There's actually a new product that has been released, really focused around pickleball in general, because there is kind of a loud pop that goes, and it's just part of the play. And so there is a screening fence, or a, it replaces a windscreen, actually. And it goes actually on the fence and goes up to the ten-foot in height, and it actually directs that noise straight up. And the reviews I've seen are positive, and they say that it works. We're actually going to try it out on some of our existing courts just to try to address that particular concern. We want, are wanting to do as much as we can to address those concerns.
Now, do you know what kind of, like, she mentioned the noise levels with that Grand Lake that has the inflatable right now? Do you know what kind of noise level is being put out outside the dome itself?
I don't. I haven't seen a study on that or anything. And I also don't know what the separation is at this time.
Right.
But it's something that we can, we can look at. And I can follow up with her on a, on a meeting there as well.
Well, I would suggest whether this is approved or denied. I mean, if it's denied, you go to City Council Appeal, or if it's approved, you go on City Council also. But would be to engage with them to, let, talk to them before that meeting, which I think is what they're wanting to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Can I ask, just to clarify for the people who are here? The dome structure is not, how far away from that is, is it from the neighbors? It looks like you have the traditional courts and then the dome further away, which is the big forty-five-foot structure that's of concern.
It is roughly three-hundred feet.
Okay.
Each of the court batteries out here, the pair of two courts are a hundred-and-twenty feet apiece, and there are two of those structures, including your walkways and everything else between the nearest homeowner and the dome structure.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the only additional court, pickleball courts you're adding are within the dome facility itself, right?
Yes, we are.
That's the only additional one.
The only additional, we are repurposing one of the existing courts, but yes.
And so the tennis courts, I guess, are not as noisy as the pickleball courts, right?
Yes, that is correct. I wasn't aware that anything was going on, or that it was, that tennis, that tennis court was a sound issue. But if it is, we can, we can also look at doing something with those sound barriers as well on tennis courts.
Any other questions, applicant?
Do you know what the height is of the clubhouse?
I can get close. It's two, be two stories with ten-foot plates. So you'd be looking at twenty-four, roughly twenty-four feet to the bottom of the top plate of the second story, and then you have a six-twelve root pitch. So probably roughly thirty, thirty-five-ish?
It looks like.
Okay. Just trying to gauge that with the.
With the dome.
The dome, okay.
And then to answer the question on the trees, they were currently planning on putting in ten-to-twelve-foot trees for those green giants, and they do grow at roughly a foot a year.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions, staff? I think we'd like to hear staff's recommendation one more time before we move on.
Sure, let me read it as written here. Based on the location of the property and surrounding land uses, staff recommends approval of PUD fifteen twenty dash twenty twenty-four and the plating on the property be waived. And the waiver of the plating was subject to the section in the PUD that said they would take care of all, any necessary easements right of way, any of that kind of stuff.
And staff's in agreement to, or staff and the applicant all is in agreement to the landscaping buffer that you're talking about, the ten-foot with the one over fifteen-foot? All right. Any, what's your pleasure? Well, I'll make a motion to approve her staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, have roll call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jay Lee Clumpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
No.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. All right, that'll go before the City Council on July sixteenth, and it'll be in the same room at six-thirty. And I would like the applicant to get with Ms. Sassoon and the other one to at least discuss some of the stuff on lighting and the noise. All right, thanks. Next item on the agenda is item number six C, item twenty-four dash seven-nine-nine.
Yes, this was a PUD fifteen twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four. The applicant has requested to continue this item to June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, so they can revise the PUD that was submitted. Once we noticed for the PUD, staff realized that there hadn't been an application to rezone the property, which usually comes in at the same time, to industrial light. We knew that was the applicant's intent, so we have talked to the applicant. They've submitted the rezoning application. Since we do have to redo the notices, we are recommending that we continue this item to the July eleventh Planning Commission agenda so that we can have one public hearing on the PUD and the rezoning together. I'd also like to note that the notice for the rezoning that staff sent out did have an error in the location, so it would have needed to be re-noticed anyway. So for several reasons, we're requesting to continue this to the July eleventh. That way, it can be noticed properly and for both cases.
What was the date on that?
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
July, I thought, I heard June twenty-seven.
That was back in there more.
Okay. For a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that we continue this item C twenty-four dash seven-ninety-nine to the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion, second, have roll call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jay Lee Clumpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is number seven, appeals we have none. Number eight, general commission business have none. Number nine, remarks.
I would like to remind everybody to do the road survey that's out there.
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, I think it ends the twenty-sixth?
I think so.
Is it the twenty-sixth, or is it the sixteenth?
I don't know, it's on, it's on the website.
I can get to it real quick.
There are several roads that come before us a lot, that have questions.
Yeah, that need, that need things and whatnot.
And please get on and do that survey.
Come on, come on, come on. Let's go, let's go, let's go. Yes, June twenty-sixth.
Any other items? Staff have anything? Guess we're ready for another motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, adjourn, have roll call vote.
Mindy Payne?
Yes.
Jay Lee Clumpa?
Yes.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Thanks, guys.